Okay. Okay, just a minute, guys.
At this rate, financially, I should probably just sleep in my office. Not go anywhere else. That's where he is. Then it doesn't matter, right? I know.
So I'm back there.
Okay. Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting for July 23, 2025 at 8:32 a.m.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Try that again. Okay, Morley.
Here, or yes.
Wolfson. Melburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public comment on agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Come on up. State your name.
Eric Ostergren, Midland, Michigan. I run this through my AI program, so it's pretty nice and calm now. I think you guys will appreciate what I have to say. Esteemed members of the Board of Commissioners, I rise to formally object to the motion to enter into closed session as outlined in the agenda presented. The agenda states, quote, "Board discussion with attorney representatives, RE the Higgins Lake LLC, special assessment district assessment role, computation of cost, and a legal opinion received from Attorney Hissong." A motion to enter in, this is the second part of it, "A motion to enter into closed session as permission, as permitted, under the Open Meetings Act 267 of 1976, yada, yada, for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileged documents exempt from discussion or disclosure by statute. I must inquire, what specific statute are you referring to in your deliberation? It is imperative to understand that the board cannot enter into closed session merely to confer with legal counsel, especially matters that significantly impact public policy. This principle is at the very core of the Open Meetings Act. I'll speak shortly regarding the permissible, permissible reasons for entering into a closed session and emphasize that any action taken to contrary to the provision of the statute may expose this board to potential violations of the Open Meetings Act. We've encountered this matter previously with this board. It's critical to recognize that a public body consulting with an attorney does not equate to a standard attorney-client relationship. The implications of the discussions described in the agenda impact the public in a substantial manner, raising legitimate concerns about transparency and accountability pursuant to MCLA 15.268, which delineates the permissible purposes for a closed session in Section 8, Section 1, uh, Section, uh, Section 8, Subparagraph 1. A public body may convene in a closed session only for the following purposes with specific reference concerning with an attorney. E, as part of that statute, "to consult with this attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, but only if an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the, on the litigating or settlement position of the public body." There's no trial or settlement strategies or pending litigation going on regarding the assessment role or computation of cost. If there is a legal opinion regarding anything different from the assessment role or computation of cost, that subject matter hasn't been disclosed, and it should be. However, discussing the assessment role or computation of cost is not relative subject matter to go into closed session with an attorney. If this board is going to act with transparency and openness and not violate the Open Meetings Act, it should discuss the assessment role and computation of cost in the open and not in closed session. The subject matter regarding the legal opinion of Attorney Stacy Hissong needs to be disclosed. Perhaps Attorney Hissong is going to talk about pending litigation, but the subject matter of whatever litigation is going to be discussed also needs to be disclosed. You can't just say that you're going to go in to discuss a legal opinion. In light of these provisions, I urge this board to adhere to the principles of transparency and accountability mandated by the Open Meetings Act. Therefore, I implore you to reconsider the motion to enter into closed session to discuss the matters at hand on the record. Come on, you guys, you know this is wrong. You can't do this. I think you need to discuss it before that, and I'm hoping at least two of you vote for transparency and vote no to go into closed session. Doing otherwise will certainly raise suspicion about your commitment for transparency. Thank you.
Any other public comment on agenda items? Number six, board discussion with the attorney representative regarding the Higgins Lake lake level control structure, special assessment district assessment role and legal opinion received from Attorney Hissong. I would like to make a motion, um, however, I'm going to reword that motion a little bit. Um, I would like to make a motion to enter a closed session under MCL 15.268 subsection 1H to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute to discuss a confidential written legal opinion regarding the Higgins Lake lake level special assessment methodology and computation of project costs. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I understand correctly, part of the special assessment district conversation is in litigation today. There is a lawsuit against special assessment district. Am I correct?
There is a appeal in the Court of Appeals.
But it is still in litigation. So technically, that is a portion of being able to go into closed session. So I'm good.
Question I have, Madam Chair, does Mr. Ostergren's comments have any validity?
With rewording with MCL 15.268 subsection 1H.
I think you totally pointed out the fact that, that we're going to close session specifically to consider that.
Right. Yeah, you gotta pull that close.
Does this, Mr. Ostergren's comments add any validity?
By rewording it to go into closed session under MCL 15.268 subsection 1H and stating the discussion, a confidential written legal opinion regarding the Higgins Lake lake level special assessment methodology and computation of project cost.
I appreciate Mr. Ostergren's comments, but I will support this motion.
Our discussion. Roll call, please.
Morley.
Yes.
Melburn.
Yes.
Wolfson. Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
If we could please have the room cleared except for these three.
Yep.
And Jody.
Don't make us. Okay, thank you.
...of costs in an amount not to exceed $400,000.
Sumo, Madam Chair.
Second.
Discussion. Um, I believe that we were going to do Commissioner Morley. I think, yeah, we're going to change that to Commissioner Morley.
Sumo, Madam Chair.
Oh, I thought it was you for the first one and her for the second.
No, we changed. Sorry.
I guess I'm on the, the hook for both.
Yep.
So there's, there's no motion that dies, no first or a second, so let's reword that.
Okay, so, motion to authorize Commissioner Kim Morley to work with legal counsel and the engineers to finalize computation of cost in an amount not to exceed $400,000.
Sumo, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Russo.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Melburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number two, motion to authorize Commissioner Kim Morley to finalize the materials, to finalize materials for the August 6th informational meeting and September 2nd public hearing.
Again, Sumo, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Wolfson. Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public comment. Is there any public comment? Man up.
Again, Eric Ostergren. So you decided to go into a closed session based on a revision by the chair mentioning a part of the statute, and that revision wasn't even spelled out in the discussions or even deliberated by the board. I'll address item H in a minute. But here's what the statute says again. MCLA 15.268 spells out the permissible processes for closed sessions. In section 8, subparagraph 1, "A public body may convene a closed, in a closed session for only the following purposes with specific reference to conferring with an attorney. E, again, "to consult with this attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, but only if an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the public body." That's it, okay? And here's what the chair relied on to go into closed session by adding H, and she never even mentioned the, this little subparagraph. You all just relied on what she said that that was, in her infinite wisdom, that was what the deal was. H, "to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute." Adding a catch-all doesn't suffice, and it's not going to pass legal scrutiny. Which state or federal statute was discussed and what material is exempt? The subject matter you are going to discuss regarding the attorney's opinion must be disclosed to the public before you go into closed session. Then Commissioner Morley tried to cover everyone by saying there was pending litigation on the special assessment district. However, that is not entirely correct, okay? The SAD litigation has nothing to do with the legality of its formation, not the assessment roles or the computation of cost. That's what the SAD litigation has. It has to do with the legality of its formation. Nothing to do with the assessment roles, nothing to do with the computation of cost. Again, Commissioner Morley is wrong. But if you're going to do whatever you want, you're going to do it, and you did so. We'll see where this leads. There's no doubt you guys violated the OMA. At the beginning of the year, this board committed to transparency, and everyone knows that is exactly what the opposite of what this board has been doing. Why all the secrecy? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Any other public comment? With no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Ten or nine, 9:52 a.m. If anybody has not signed in, I'm asking that you remember to do so before you leave. First up, we have the 2026 Child Care Fund Budget. Jake Colini, Roscommon County, FOC juvenile referee.
And Judy.
And Judy.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Welcome to budget season. I know I'm the first one that kicks it off for us, so, um, real quick, I won't take up too much of your time, probably. The budget is, uh, is pretty pared down from what we've had in the past. This is the smallest increase we've requested ever, and that is including cutting our reimbursement by about $15,000. I felt that figure, I'm referencing the top, uh, that top portion, the bottom line there, where it says reimbursement. If you look at last year's to this year's, we've cut that, our expected reimbursements by about 15,000, just based on the juvenile reforms. We're still dealing with all of the juvenile reforms and how they play out specifically. I'm sure as, as most of you are aware, myself and Prosecutor Edwards were in Lansing about a month ago testifying in front of a congressional group regarding the closing of Chihuahua Center. So we're still looking at, uh, at placement options we have for the youth in the community. Because of that, if you go to the bottom portion of the budget there, we have just moved some money around into some detention costs and, and secure and non-secure placement costs. The reason for that is strictly a supply and demand issue. If there's less placements, they're going to be raising their daily per diems. We're not asking for, um, really much more than we had last year. In addition to that, we are introducing for the first time that this county's ever tried a diversion program, um, which will allow us to hopefully reach and help, help youth that are right on the cusp of court intervention but might not necessarily involve formal court services. So it'll, it'll allow us to hopefully start helping youth in the community at an earlier age, at a less severe age, so we don't run into those issues with them down the road or try not to with the, with the long-term placements, which are, if I'm you guys, fiscally what I'm looking at the most because those are our big, big, big budget line items there. So anything we're doing at the front to try to curb that recidivism, to keep them out of the court system, and more importantly, keep them out of long-term residential care is our goal. Leaving the kids in the home, um, having worked with the families and things like that are, are all the aims of what we're doing. And we're going to be able to roll out this, this brand new program with, uh, basically a nominal, nominal budget increase from last year. It's less, it's shortly over, I think it's about two grand, um, which is pennies, based on the size of the budget. So that's kind of the long and short of it. Judy and Keely both did fantastic jobs helping prepare the budget this year. As always, these are a year-to-year thing. I might be coming here next year and saying, hey, we have two or three youth that are, you know, 10 years old that we have to keep placed until they're 18. I don't know. But that could be, that's a crystal ball problem, and that's not what we're here for today. So this is what it's looking like for us going into next year. And I would be more than welcome to entertain any questions if you guys have any.
Yes. All right. One, I love the report and to see the year-to-year. I mean, that was very, very helpful, especially for somebody who hasn't been through that process in the past. So I love the, the presentation to it. I like the diversion program that you're getting ready to try, try to keep that because I know that there's so many things with this new juvenile changes that you just don't get money for or you do get money for. I mean, it's ever-changing, so to create a budget at this early in the game, not knowing, is pretty impressive when I think about the role that you have to play. If I understand that way, it's kind of calculated, the very top is really your income piece. And this is not to approve it or not, but like no child, there was a child support line item all the way through the years. It's at zero. Just for the newbie, what is, why is it zero?
It's just because of how it's redirected.
How it's redirected.
It come redirected through the juvenile portion. It usually funnels through FOC instead.
FOC, which is kind of similar to some of the other lines that have zeros that you just don't have to think about as you're preparing for the future. Okay. Employee costs are kind of what they are, right? You know, it's best that you can do, so.
This year, they, they went down from what they were. We had, we had some staffing changes, so that, that changes, but that, that's all stuff that, that second section there, Commissioner Morley, is everything that I consider completely not within my control.
Absolutely.
So that part I don't really pay, pay all that much to, but that did help contribute to the, us being able to reduce the reimbursement costs issue.
You said it better than I because that's the way I anticipated as I looked at it, so, thank you. Nice job.
All right.
Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you, Wolfson, here today. Full disclosure, I worked at Camp Nacomas for 10 years before they closed down in 2010. It's a, it's a terrible travesty that Chihuahua shut down. It's, it's very short-sighted from the state. Thanks again for being here.
I see in this report you deal with some substance abuse.
Yes.
Get with me later because we're working with, using our opioid funds.
Okay.
Perhaps there's something in your program that would benefit from that.
Great, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Tag along. Thanks, Rex, for bringing that up. You have that opioid money that we need to spend, and obviously this would be a good area to put it into. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer Report, second quarter 2025, our Treasurer, Marcy Dankert.
Morning.
Good morning.
So everyone should have the second quarter of 2025 Treasurer's Report. I do not.
I didn't either. Yep. I don't. I'll look at Rex's. Okay.
Did you get the board packed it all from Joe's desk?
Yeah, I got it.
Uh-uh. Okay.
Now, righty. So the, that's okay. The, the front spreadsheet is a synopsis of all of the bank accounts for April, May, and June, how much interest we have earned, and as you can see, interest is pretty much holding its own at around four, just over 4% is what we're making on the majority of our investments. So we range, you know, the low end was 87,000, the high end was 90,000 in, in those months, those three months. And then the corresponding general ledger that shows that what's in the banks matches what's in the general ledger with reconciling items, outstanding credit card payments, things like that. Our investment accounts, those are all staying status quo. So nothing much has moved as far as our accounts go. Things are just kind of staying, staying the same. Some other things in the treasurer's office that we have been working on is we're getting really close to a settlement on those prior year foreclosures from 2013 to 2020. So that should be coming up here shortly with a proposed settlement, and then we'll have a better idea of what we will need to pay out to any of those claimants. We have received about 50 notice of intents to claim those excess proceeds from that prior year, from that timeframe. I'm going to guess, if I had to throw a number out there, we probably had 300 properties roughly that were foreclosed on in that time period, and 50 of them have filed the notice of intent. So it's kind of what we're looking at there. Loretta has been working diligently on PRE auditing. We had one parcel that we've been in litigation kind of for the last two years. That seems to have been settled, and we've prevailed, that was dismissed by the Court of Appeals, so we were glad to see that in our office. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Any questions?
No, I just may want to go on record that I did receive this before, just not with this particular group of packets, so I did see that before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Renewal of housing interlocal agreement, our Controller, Jody Valentino.
So this is the renewal for the agreement between Roscommon County and Crawford Housing, Crawford County Housing Development. It's what allows us to utilize Hannah Lor, the Housing Director for Crawford County, to oversee the similar CD BG programs that can be administered in Roscommon County. This has already been brought to the Crawford County Board of Commissioners, already approved by the Crawford County Board of Commissioners. We do have a copy signed by their chairperson attached in the packet as well. It runs for a one-year period only, August 1st of this year through July 31st, 2026. The payment arrangement works as such that we would pay a minimum of $7,000 or 18% of collected CD BG program income. I'll explain the 18% as in if we do a certain amount of projects and we retain 18% of that for operating those projects, for handling those projects. If it's under 7,000, then we pay the difference between the amount collected of the 18% and the 7,000. If it's 7,000 or more, then we don't pay anything, and that is how they earn their income off of that. All I would be asking for, it would be a retroback August 1st, and as long as you're okay with it, Hannah will still service those things for that week period we'll have before that board meeting comes, but we would ask for it to be retrobed back to August 1st coverage.
Seeing on that, it hasn't changed any with the funds and all that kind of stuff. I've seen on the housing board for quite a few years, that part has not changed. Thank you.
Yes. Jody, could you? What is CD BG? What's the initials? What is it like? Help me understand that program, sorry. I can't hear both at one time.
Block grant.
Yep.
So essentially, the Community Development Block Grant is a program that comes down from the federal government through MISTDA, and that allows for a certain amount of funding to be made available to the counties for eligible projects. Obviously, you have to meet, be below income and asset thresholds. Additionally, it's very specific to what types of projects can be done. This board actually improved an increase in that at the beginning of this year?
I think so.
At the end of last year, so that you can cover wells, roofs, those types of major concerns that affect actual, you know, the state of living conditions. Some disability coverages for ramps or improvements in that area as well can be considered, so.
And I'm also, as I go through, just finish a few questions, and this one's new to me, too. We appoint one liaison, which I'm assuming is Commissioner, no?
No.
No. No more. We don't. Everything is done.
Well, it says that's under our general provisions, that we do appoint.
You can appoint, yes.
We'll create a bid committee for housing projects and we'll appoint one liaison to the Crawford County Housing Department. I just didn't know if that, if that's not true, then.
It's not no longer.
I think Dave is the former appointee.
Yeah.
We have you, so for the last two years we've done this? Hannah has been our, our appointee to Crawford County.
Okay, that's clear. Got it, all right. And then, um, they have reports to us as requested, and then later on it says at least once a year. That, do they still come before us at least once a year?
Yes, she does.
So you will actually see her at the second meeting in August. They have to have an annual closeout meeting, a public meeting where they present that information to the public and to the Board of Commissioners that shows all the projects they've done, total amounts expended, how much of that 18% we've captured, and then a, a formal opening hearing as well, and those things are all published in the paper for the public to attend.
Nice. So my last question is around our responsibilities as well to, um, that the work is done at Crawford County. Like, that's the house, that's where they utilize, at the Crawford County Courthouse and remotely, but then it says that we make space also available here. Is that both?
And we do. Yes.
All right. I just, it seemed duplicate in the, in the agreement, I'm like, are they doing it there or are they doing it here?
So she does it both. So Hannah has a secretary as well, and Violet is here normally at least once a week to fill. So Hana has a secretary as well, and Violet is here normally at least once a week to fill processes. When there, we've had the last three months where they've not been releasing any funds for projects because of all the changes at a federal and state level. But she is traditionally here two times a week as well. But she works continuously on business, so we'll introduce you to her.
Sounds good. That's perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. So we'll need a motion then for that. Ross Common County Vehicle Driver and Safety Policy, discussion of the whole. Commissioner Wolfson, would you like to start?
Yes. In front of you is our present policy. I don't know if there needs to be any changes or not. I have a question. How many county vehicles do we have?
It's not as many as you think. It depends on what you want to classify as a county vehicle. If you take out all of the sheriff's related vehicles, we have a Buildings and Grounds vehicle. We have three trucks for animal control, and we have one older vehicle at the airport that serves as a transition vehicle. Yep, it's a courtesy vehicle.
And then, also, would this policy cover the Sheriff's Department, or do they have their own policy?
So, our Sheriff's Department has their own policy and ways of checking that are actually better than this because they're law enforcement. They actually would receive straight notifications if somebody's in trouble.
Any questions from anybody else on it?
So, under the driver guidelines and the driver criteria, there's like three bullets that are almost identical. Whether it's safely operate, or must drive in a safe, responsible manner. So I don't know from a cleaning up perspective if those need to be condensed as to one. I don't know. Maintain a valid driver's license, but it also says have a valid and current driver's license in the next phase. So, just thoughts on if that needs to be condensed and put into one? I don't know really the difference between driver guidelines and driver criteria, if they're both listed in both. I mean, it's been since 2015 that we've looked at it, so...
Is it detrimental the way it is?
Excuse me.
Not necessarily detrimental, but does it make sense? I'm okay if you don't want to change it. I'm bringing it up just to, as we're cleaning up things, make sure that they're as clean as possible.
And Madam Chair, maybe I'm missing it, but do we discuss texting or talking on the phone while we're at work?
That may have to be added in there.
It's important for the public to understand that if we're at work, we're not texting on our phone when we're driving down the road.
Isn't that a law already?
It is a law.
It is, but I can tell you in our driver policy, it's in there.
Is that special notice? I'm okay with adding that if we need to.
How about we also get if there's additional, as you're reading through a lot of this, and we've made our notes and stuff like that. But if there is additional, that we get that to Commissioner Wolfson no later than Monday?
Well, we can go further than that, because we won't bring this up till the next meeting.
Say that again. I couldn't hear you.
This won't be brought back to the table for two weeks.
Right.
Yeah, but usually Monday is our next.
Have it in time to make the adjustments for, get it redrawn up? My other question before I send those to Rex is, an at-fault accident relating to fatality, does it matter that we're a no-fault state?
For the purposes of our general liability insurance, it does.
Okay. That's, I just... Will send any information, changes, or additions? Okay.
Sound good? Meeting Room Reservations and Cancellation Policy, discussion of the whole. Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes, this is the policy as it exists. Since the Clerk's Office is the one that handles all this affair, I presented it to her. She did not feel there was any changes necessary. With that being said, I'm going to go with what she says.
Yeah, this was just cleaned up a couple of years ago.
How long ago? I'm sorry.
2021. We cleaned it up, yeah.
So that, with the consensus of the board, that'll remain in our policy as it stands.
Might I also comment, when you compare what the school's going to charge for us to have hearings and informational meetings, that is pretty low, because we're getting charged $50 an hour to use an auditorium. So, I think it's pretty fair.
Ross Common County Policy for Expense Reimbursement, discussion of the whole. Commissioner Wolfson.
This one's a little more involved, and I don't see any problem with it. But I'm going to refer to our administrator to make sure it's a workable policy on her end.
Didn't we just update a policy that included this?
So, we actually, yes, as that was, and when Commissioner...
That was travel expense.
Yes, but we also addressed regular expense reimbursement practices in there as well. So what I can do is I will compare A and B for you, and just see if there's anything missing, and if there needs to be removed or shortened version to put for you.
Put it all into one.
That's what I'd recommend.
Perfect.
That was it. With nothing further on our work session, this meeting is adjourned, and we will start our next meeting at 10:30. Board meeting for July 23rd at 10:30 a.m.
Let's witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Censor. Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Wolfson. Morley. Here. Russo.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
Sue move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Morley. Yes.
Wolfson. Censor. Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval of the consent agenda. The items in the consent agenda are meeting minutes from July 9th, 2025. I do have one correction under unfinished business. A, it should read fitness policy review, and it says now employee, and it should say new employee. July 9th, 2025, Lake Level Control Structure Meeting. Correspondences A through D. Letter Regarding Lake Level Issues, Catholic Human Services with the New Jail Service, MAC Legislative Updates, and Notice from the Public Corps of Engineers. Monthly Department Report, Sheriff Revenue for May and June. And there was no Controller or County Clerk report. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction to the meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Morley. Yes. Motion carried.
Public comment for agenda items only.
Yes. This will be really short. You know, it's a lot easier being on this side of the chair than being over on that side of the chair. It's more fun, too. Anyway, this has to do with agenda item 8C. I thought that the Commission was going to respond to questions raised by the public at these meetings. At least, that's what you'd committed to do a while back. So far, you've answered some, but not all. My question a while back was about the additional measuring devices on our lakes, and why they aren't, why that data isn't being disclosed to the public. That information is available through Hi-Fi. In fact, I asked for it in a FOIA request. And those measurements were paid for with tax dollars. That's the question I brought up, and it hasn't been answered yet. So I'll ask it again. Why isn't the data on the additional measuring devices on our lakes being disclosed? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on agenda items? Do we have any visitors? Unfinished business. A, updates to the strategic plan. Commissioner Morley, would you like to start?
Started on that one. Let me, everyone had a copy of some of the additions that our Senator had added. So let's pick up on, just to kind of revisit, let's go to June. And this is regards to the relationships with department heads and staff that Rex and Dave had graciously done. So Darlene, you want to just kind of bring this up to speed on your thoughts and comments there, and we can have some discussion on that?
Sure. So, a while back, the board had talked about department heads giving quarterly updates. And I think there was some confusion on there, and I know we really haven't done much with that since. We do get updates from certain departments all the time. I think the thought process was, is to try to have each of the departments give at least a quarterly update, whether it's written, whether they come here. It's not so much about the budget, it's just about what their department is actually doing and facing. And in turn, I believe that that can help us better understand what their needs are when budget season comes. And I didn't know if that was something that Commissioner Wolfson or Commissioner Russo would like to kind of add up.
Go ahead, Rex.
Yes. A year ago, at least, before we even started strategic planning, I said, "We need to improve relationships with the elected officials." And maybe we should have meetings on a regular basis with them, and you don't have to necessarily talk about business, just have meetings with people. And that way, everybody knows nobody's a robot. Since then, it kind of got into our strategic plan, but it kind of went awry. Last Friday, Commissioner Morley and I were at such a meeting. Now, that entailed looking at health insurance. But it was also brought up that we need to have these meetings maybe once a month, and again, not necessarily talk about business. David is willing to take on that task with me on these meetings. And that way, there's a chair or vice chair there should be a money matter issue that needs to be taken to the board. That's one respect that we were looking at on that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And we can talk with them in the meetings about reports, see how they feel about that. I think we need to engage their advice on that and not be demanding of that, you know. So, that was an idea David had, and we're going to try and put that together.
I echo that some departments give us reports, some don't. And I think understanding what works for them, whether it's a quarterly. Me personally, I don't need a monthly from each one of those. I think that's just too much information for them to have to gather and put together. Understanding what goes on in their departments, I agree with Chair Censor that that only helps us be better prepared for budget time. Because if you don't understand what they're going through, as we heard earlier today, there are some things that they don't get money for, that they have to do, especially within an elected role. So, it's important for us to understand those. And it not necessarily be about a budget all the time, it's to understand their roles and what they do. So, I would support that. I don't necessarily have to have a monthly meeting when you're talking with them on options. A quarterly would be fine. It could be in writing before, you know, just what's going on? What's the changes? What are they facing? What's been great about what's gone on in their department? So, just helps us understand that a little bit better.
Well, my take on, you know, having a report from them would be strictly so I understand what happens in their lives in this building. Not necessarily tied to budget, although that may come into conversation. But the main object is to have an understanding what they go through on a daily basis.
Correct. We can add, if it sounds like you two will maybe be doing this on a whatever, monthly, whatever, monthly basis for a while? Okay? Any other comments or thoughts on that? I know that our county clerk has been instigating that from the very beginning. So, thank you for starting those conversations with the elected officials. Is there anything you want to add or potentially change?
Well, I have to confer with my counterparts on that. That's not really the intent, our intent with those meetings. Who's here? Marcy's here with me, so she can direct me. It's more of a wanting to work as coal employers with the Commissioners to make sure that the employees, that all of our staff, the people that keep this county building running, are taken care of, for lack of a better term. So, yes, our conversation on Friday was regarding insurance and wanting to help with reviewing that, and maybe making sure that we can, you know, if there's going to be proposed changes or anything like that, that can be provided to those people a lot sooner than what it was. So, we're looking to help and work with the department, or work with the county Commissioners. It wasn't necessarily to have the, work on building the relationship. It's part of working on building a relationship with us. I know our request when we were doing these meetings was to have Rex, or Darlene, or Kim. So, you know, and I've had that discussion with Chairman Censor. And so, you know, we can definitely have more conversation about it, how that goes. But the elected officials are meeting, yes, to work on.
Thank you, because that is how I also got the intent of that meeting, is that it's not just, hey, this is not what's working, which is important, but it's also to say, as I heard from those elected officials, we're here to help. Our Controller's job is busy, our jobs are part-time and busy, and sometimes we're not always there. So, how do we work together to quickly solve some issues and work forward? So, one of the things that I heard last year, and correct me, Commissioner Wolfson, if I'm wrong, but that the elected officials would like to have an insurance committee only, separate from wage and salary, that they appoint from their department to try to work through other options. Apparently, regardless of what has happened in the past, that insurance is still a bone of contention in this entire county. So, allowing them to take a lead and take a look and come up with solutions for us, I don't think is a bad idea, and I'd say let's do that. And so, we start that ball rolling sooner than later as we start to look at insurance coming down the pike. Thoughts, questions, concerns? Yes?
So, you can only start that conversation when you actually have the data that's provided to you from your current person, which was September last year, which is when that was presented to the Board of Commissioners, sent out to wage and salary, and then shared once we had all the information with the elected officials and the department heads. So, when you're planning that, make sure that you're planning that so that you have that information. Secondly, when you're looking at that type of information, to cut out your administrator controller or your benefits day-to-day organizer and your H R specialist, you're missing a large block of the planning, and you're also undercutting part of my contract and the job that you've asked me to do. That would be my only big concern with the things that you guys are talking about, is you have hired and contracted with an administrator controller to oversee day-to-day operations, to strategically plan and bring suggestions to the Board of Commissioners in order to ensure that the budget... ensure that the budgets are there. Last year, you had four or five choices that were presented to you for, for benefits. You listened to the wage and salary committees that came before you. Commissioner Morley, you sat in the audience. Mr. Ostergren was on the board. He can attest to all of those things. If at that time, the board says, that's not right, or the elected officials say, we'd like to meet with you because we, we'd like to offer some other suggestions, we could give up a position in order to afford these benefits. Nobody did that at that time. But that is your time to do that. If you would like to change the rules of the way things operate in this building by continuing down these types of paths, I will, in a public meeting state, you need to eliminate the administrator controller position. It is not allowed to do its job as a COO if you continually work around, go around, and deflate the authority that this position has as a chief administrative officer, as a chief accounting officer. There's no reason people can't meet and talk. There is no reason that people can't have conversations and get to know each other and build trust. I cannot perform in this role, nor do I have the ability to defend myself against other elected officials, except in this state right here. It is to the point for me that if this county and this Board of Commissioners would like to take these various tasks on that come from this position, my recommendation is you buy me out of my contract and you eliminate this position and parcel out.
I can add to that. So it sounds like you're tense about having other people help in this process. So.
No, Commissioner Morley, I'm not tense about having other people help. I'm tense about the fact that this board continues to take the role of this position and diminish it by giving authority that was vested in the creation of this 20 years ago to other departments, which is where it used to be. That's where it used to be. And I'm okay if you guys want to do that. But you have to understand that as an employer, the actions you are taking are not allowing this job to function correctly anymore.
So might I add a suggestion? Because the feedback from the public and the county employees is that that process has not been done very fast. And you can't wait until October, November to tell an employee, we're not going to fund your SSA, we're not going to do this, we made the decision about your benefits without going back to you and saying, John Doe, this is how much money it's going to cost. Are you willing? Now, if those are incorrect statements, then we need to bring those out.
Those are incorrect statements. And you can go forward and you can look through emails to do that. I would be more than happy to provide the proof for that.
As the controller and the one who's trying to build this trust, which you want to do, then that needs to be done. And that needs to be done in public. Right?
I am more than happy to do that if I know prior to those accusations coming out in private meetings, that that's going to happen.
And if we do this moving forward, that there are no repercussions when we bring stuff up in a meeting. That should not happen.
What are repercussions?
I am okay if that's not what you choose to do. What I want is those opinions to be brought forth and that all of us are aware of those and not just what is presented to us.
What would repercussions look like?
Jody, please don't make me go down that path. I am not.
That should be personnel.
That, that is a personnel issue that I will not address in public, nor would you want me to.
No, I am more than happy to do that.
I am bringing up what was shared with us and that should not be not taken. That's what I'm asking. So this is a discussion for us in a strategic plan, if this, if you want an insurance committee or if you want wage and salary to be done. So what's your take? We're not going to debate it down the path for another two months. These people need answers to get started.
Well, let's get started with what we're planning on doing.
Commissioner Wolfson?
The controller will be involved along with HR.
My take on a lot of that meeting was if we start the process sooner in the year, everybody has a chance to review it. And that was the major take on that meeting for me.
And I mentioned that, and it sounds as if, from the, from controller, that we can't start that earlier. Because you just heard, we can't do that until September, right?
So you get the data.
Okay. Do, can we start the process of getting bids and what that would be before September?
No, you cannot.
Okay.
Because we do not have the data on our usage from BCN.
Okay.
We don't have the data. So that data last year is the earliest that Priority Health ever provided that information.
Yeah, usually it's a lot later in the year.
Pushed and pushed and pushed to get it early.
Which is great. I applaud that.
And that's because we knew we had major changes coming. This year, BCN has told us, and I actually put it in our calendar, that we should have that information mid to the end of August.
Okay.
At that point, we already know under Blue Care that we are capped at an 8.6% under the plans we currently have.
I heard that, right.
We are fiscally capped in our agreement with them. That's already there. There's already been a request to see if Priority will bid us. Priority will not bid us until they have our usage data from BCN. Because you cannot set rates until you compile all of that information. And with BCN, you look at it from a business standpoint. They've got to have at least six months of data before they can say, we're losing money or making money off of you.
Right, exactly. No. Because speaking to some other municipalities, some of the groups will have their rates already because they know open enrollments in October and they know that they need to get that information out. But I'm hearing, none of the people that we work with will give us any of that information until later.
And that is through, that is through our plan year, because our plan year starts January 1st. So like the township, Garrish, for instance, their plan year actually starts earlier, April 1st. So when they come to their budget cycle, they have more than six months of data already for a plan year to be able to put forward into review. So these are the reasons that I feel like this position has to be included in these. Because this is, this is my job.
That's fine. I don't have an argument with that. I just brought forward what they recommended.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Pricing set aside, can we look at plan options in the meantime?
You can always look at plan options. That's a non, if somebody has an idea for something that they'd like to see, hey, we'd like to go back to where we started.
I assume there's different plans that we can enter into.
You can make and break whatever you want for a plan. You can ask for.
And then pricing, come into it later.
I'm fine with that. We can keep with the schedule that it is if you guys want to move forward. It was our jobs to bring it forth in public for our transparency as well. The one thing I do want to clarify is that part of this came from, there was a rumor in the county that the board was unwilling and not wanting to look at any other options. And to my knowledge, I've never had that conversation. And I've been very clear, that is not a true statement on my behalf. So that is where it came from. Rumor, good or bad, it was a rumor and it got started. So if that's not true, I just want to be open that I am open to other options as our controller starts to work through those.
I think as a board and even as our controller, human resources, I think everybody has to be open to every option available that fits within the realm of things. I think we have to look and do our due diligence. And I think we, maybe it's the way that we convey it up here and it doesn't get out correctly. So maybe we, as commissioners, have to make sure that when we make decisions, that it's very clear on why those decisions are made.
Well, and it's also, it's the fairness to our controller to do that.
Correct.
And to make sure that that doesn't impede her job. What are our clear expectations on moving forward? So I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yes.
I appreciate commissioners leaning in and trying to have better relationships with department heads. But I would caution the commissioners to tread lightly on Jody's position. I heard Rex mention a few minutes ago that, you know, we're going to meet just to discuss. If I'm going to meet with a department head, we're going to talk about their job. We're not going to just shoot the breeze because they're there to do a job. It's nice to have casual relationships as far as a good talk in the hallway, but, you know, if I'm going to meet with the department head, we're ultimately going to talk about work. I would just caution the commissioners just to tread lightly. Even I've been here since I was a teenager. And, you know, there's, there's rumors started all the time. Some of them have some validity, but I find that a lot of times, rumors that are started have no validity whatsoever. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other, any other questions on that one?
So can we be very clear that we're fine with Rex and David moving forward with this and that there will not be a separate insurance committee? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not right now.
Okay.
But I, I would add on that they work closely with Jody in that regard. I know they are, but I think it's important for them to hear that.
But what I'm hearing is that they're not going to have a committee, separate. So.
We don't need one. I have to strike my own thing.
I don't think you need a committee. I just think you need to discuss.
Yeah.
And we will leave it within the way, I just want to make sure I'm clear as we put this in the plan so people don't question.
Yep.
That it is our decision that we will leave it within the wage and salary committee. Obviously, that keeps our controller involved and no separate committee will be given. Is that what you want?
Yep.
All right. Got it. Are we okay to move on to the next? I think one of your next comments was around, how do we want that budget information? We had talked about not putting our controller through 50 million versions of what we need to see from her.
Correct.
So I did submit my information of what I was looking for. I, I have not sent examples of something to look at. It was just in verbiage, so I can own sending an example, but I did submit my recommendations.
Yep. The August 1st deadline is fast approaching, so if there's anything specific that you would like budget-wise for our controller, Jody, to do something, present in a certain way, whatever that may be, we need it by August 1st because I'm not going to throw it on her at the last minute.
Agreed.
It's not fair to her and I'm not going to do it.
And we're all in commitment that if you don't have it in by August 1st, then we're not making changes.
Correct.
By what we want. Is that an agreement of all of us?
Yep.
Okay, good. The next piece moving into September is really around Commissioner Wolfson and Commissioner Milburn and our controller working through some of that opioid work. Is there any updates or questions or anything you want to add to that?
Yes, I have updates on that.
Okay.
A meeting was held with Sheriff Lieutenant Beck about coming up with a program in their area that we can utilize these opioid funds with. Also was a meeting with Rebecca Yunker from Child Care. Because in the things that are acceptable, what we spent on, there was things in there that her area could possibly utilize. And then also, I took information to the prosecutor because there are certain areas where perhaps, rather than take somebody through the court system and incarcerate them, we can utilize opioid funds and get people help that way. Mark and I felt this was a good start because we start with people that are little and we wind up with, once they leave our facilities. After that, we figure out where we could possibly go with this program once they leave our facilities and still need help. And then today, I noticed that we might be able to use some of this to help Jake in his area.
Follow on to that. I talked to Lieutenant Beck in regard to this. I know there's been some discussions that wait a year to do this. My opinion, we should, we should jump on it quickly. A year is too long.
Yep.
If we can find some areas that we can assert some money, we should do it as quickly as possible. Otherwise, we're just holding on to money that's just sitting there in the bank. And in my opinion, that's unacceptable.
That's, that's Mark and I's both opinion that we need to start. And that's why we moved it up on the schedule, moving along with it.
Thanks for your leadership, Rex.
Chair Censor?
Yes.
I would agree. I, I'm okay moving it up and I'm glad that you're willing to take the lead and move that forward. Is there a point in time that maybe we could put on an agenda where you can present what, I think one of the first things you're working on is, how can we use this money? Like, present to the board what that looks like and what is your next plan, phase one, phase two, by when? Just kind of give us your, your plan of that?
Once we get back from each of these departments, or as we get back from these departments, we'll bring their proposal to the board for approval.
Could you give, sorry, that would be great. The other piece is, how, what are we allowed to use and not use and how?
I have all that people.
Could that be presented to us before that? Because it'd be helpful to understand the parameters.
I'm looking, just, just a quick swag. I'm looking within the next three months.
Do we not know how we can use the money?
No, we do. We have.
You do have that. So we could do that before three months.
Yes, I have a printout of it.
But I think we should have a plan in place within the next three months.
Okay. So the look, as I look at this plan, we could have something next month about what, what we can use the money for.
It's forthcoming.
And then two more months, a plan presented on what you're going to work on for the next year. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, every, every department that we've discussed this with has been given a copy of how we can spend this money. So they can sure, when they work it into their program, it qualifies. It's like 16 pages, 14 pages.
Yeah.
Of things we can utilize it on. But I do have that copy, yes.
It would just be nice, I think, to share that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm glad that they have it as well as they prepare, but it would be nice for the rest of us commissioners to even know what we're allowed to use and not use and when. So if you could present that next time, that'd be great.
Also, in the MAC meeting I attended on money, Monday, this was some discussion. It's still unclear about reporting on this money.
Okay.
My research says, and this person did say, in Michigan, we only have to report quarterly on money that we did not spend, if that makes sense. But, you know, that could change also. It also come out that MAC did a survey on counties that were already been doing this for, during year two. And the survey results told me, they started basically the same way we are. They started at the public safety level and then, once they got them programs working, if they seen a need rise to go beyond that and there's still funds available, then they made that move in that direction in year two. So, you know, that, that was good to hear that what we're doing is pretty much what most of the other counties have already done, that has spent their money, or some of it.
That's good. I think the only other thing in this is our brochure. So each of you have the unofficial, I shouldn't say unofficial, the not printed, perfect one. That is the final version of that. I'm looking for another higher resolution logo. Our clerk Stevenson sent me what she had. We're going to see if that works. If it doesn't, I need to see if we have a higher res before that goes to print. But I'm hoping in August, we can have some printed. But this is the final version and it should be ready to go once we put it in the format and have a better logo. So that's the one before you. That's why I don't have them out for the public today.
What's wrong with the logo of the time?
She meant a higher resolution one.
A higher resolution, so it's not fuzzy when it goes to print.
That's good to me.
Don't get another logo that a higher res, a printer wants that, is why I worry. You're not saying it, when you send it to print from a printer, they need a higher res.
Yes.
So we'll see. Got a couple options there, but I'm hoping to get that to the printers before that first or second week of August. So we can have them for our meeting coming up.
Are these going to go out in a mailing list or are they just going to?
No, they'll just be up there.
Every meeting.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Those are, those two things. I don't think there's anything else to review on that at this point.
Any other questions or comments? Our next are public comment responses. Where to start? Last week, Mr. Ostergren asked why there are not two reporting sites on each of the Three years, there were only one reporting site and that was the USGS. Everybody was okay with that and only having one reporting. Everybody was okay with that, and only having one reporting site when it was USGS, and that was the official site. On Higgins Lake, there are two sites. There's a USGS site and a Hi-Fi site. Currently, those are the only two units on Higgins Lake. On Lake St. Helen, there's one site, and on Houghton Lake, there are two sites. One by the lake level control structure, and one in Bayview Marina area. I can't tell you if there's going to be additional sites added to the lakes, that has not been determined at this time. Dave Bisby stated that we had used all the funds up already for the Houghton Lake Special Assessment District. I have gotten with our Treasurer to verify this. This is an untrue statement. Currently, Houghton Lake still has $702,708.80 of the $1.25 million that was assessed. He was upset when I responded back to his prior comments, showing that they were incorrect. He did not like being chastised, I believe is what he said. It's not chastising when all we're doing is correcting wrong information, just like the statement I made prior in regards to the amount of money that has been used in the Houghton Lake Special Assessment. I did not chastise Mr. Bisby, I simply gave factual information to debunk the false information that he gave during his public comment. Craig Cotterman asked about the Bayview Marina monitor and why it was taken down. Why won't the Commissioners put it back online? This particular monitor was to help in the development of the operations manual. It was for informational purposes only. This statement was made multiple times since the unit was installed. Yet, Mr. Cotterman continued to come up and into meetings and use that reading as the legal level. When in fact, that is not the monitor that is used to report the legal level of Houghton Lake. This became confusing to other people, so the monitor was taken off the daily reading that was emailed out to the public, until we can better determine a way to label that monitor, to show that the monitor is for information only, and it is not where the actual lake level monitor is used for the operations manual. Mr. Ostrigan also stated that the rocks in Higgins Lake have been illegally removed. I have looked at photos from the past where there no rocks exist, then rocks appeared. And yes, according to some information, rocks were removed. However, to say it was done illegally, when I have not been able to find any court documents that state or support the claim of illegal, therefore, the statement that the rocks were removed illegally appears to be a false claim, unless Mr. Ostrigan or someone else can show me court documents that show otherwise. Mike Smoka came up and gave a reading from the Hi-Fi off of the Shepkey Consulting webpage. Doing so, he was using both the 29 datum and the 88 datum, thus mixing the two datums. You can't intertwine the datums. He then stated that Houghton Lake was out of compliance, again, a false statement. On the day Mr. Smoka spoke, the reading was 1138.3. The legal level for Houghton Lake is 1138.1. Therefore, it's either .20 feet or 2.4 inches above the legal summer level, which is in compliance with the new court order and the operations manual. Mr. Ostrigan also made a comment that, to him, it seemed like I, Commissioner Censor, wanted to hold all of our meetings in private. I'm not exactly sure how he derived that conclusion. Nowhere in my statement did I ever say our meetings should be held in private. What I stated was, the public forgets that this meeting is for the Board of Commissioners. It's our meeting to get tasks accomplished for the county. It's our time to discuss matters. We do so in the eyes of the public. But this is not a public meeting. It is a meeting open to the public, so that they can see what is being discussed and what decisions are being made. Nowhere in that statement did I say I wanted or wished we could have our meetings in private. I believe that our meetings should be done openly and in public. As a prior Commissioner, Mr. Ostrigan already knows this about me. These meetings are the meetings for the Board, which are open to the public. A Board of Commissioners meeting is a formal gathering of elected officials, the Board, to conduct official business, make decisions, and set policy for the county. A public meeting is a broader term encompassing any gathering open to the public, where information is shared or discussions occur, which may or may not involve official decision-making by a governing body or Board. Does anybody else have any comments that they wish to share in regards to public comment responses?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think this is the reason that we want to change Board Rule 5.3, so that when inaccurate information's given, the Board has a chance before the end of the meeting to correct it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I agree. I was going to say the same thing. We said that at the last meeting. It is beneficial to the public if we can have some comments afterwards. There is going to be things that we don't have an answer for, that will have to be put on the next agenda, as we've already spoken. So, and I do realize, in all fairness to the public, that this brochure is not completely done. But as we reviewed it, it clearly states, if you make a public comment, or you email... It has to be emailed back, so we have the exact question that you're asking, so words don't get misused. So if something's not getting answered, it's probably because you didn't follow the right process. So that is why I have been really trying to get this done. So it is clear, if you want your information stated, that you follow the right process. So that's my only other comment. So hopefully, we'll get that out, so they can have it.
Any other comments? New business? We don't have any. Motions and resolutions, whenever our Clerk is ready.
Motion number 1. Move to rescind the Chase Working Capital Business Card Resolution as adopted by the Board on May 12, 2010.
Show move.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Milburn?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number 2. Move to authorize Controller Jody Valentino to transfer the 2025 General Fund Excess Fund Balance Amount of $131,847.2 to the Capital Improvement Fund, as outlined in the Board of Commissioners' Fund Balance Policy.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Censor?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number 3. Move to adopt the revised County of Ross Common Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace Policy, C attached, effective July 23, 2025. This policy replaces all previous existing County of Ross Common Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace Policies.
Show move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Russo?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number 4. Move to revise #5.3 Order of Business of the 2025 Rules of Order, Board of Commissioners, Ross Common County, Michigan, to read as follows. #5.3 Order of Business, the agenda shall be arranged in the following order. 1. Call to Order. 2. Pledge of Allegiance. 3. Roll Call. 4. Approval of the Agenda. 5. Approval of the Consent Agenda. Minutes, Claims and Accounts, Class A's, Correspondence, Monthly Department Reports, Controller Report, Clerk Report. Public Comment, Agenda Items Only, please limit to 5 minutes per person. Visitors, Unfinished Business, New Business, Motions, Resolutions, Committee Reports, Public Comment, please limit to 5 minutes per person or group. Board Comment, please limit to 5 minutes per person. Adjournment.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Going over to #5.3, going to the 6th Public Comment. I've talked about this for years. I still think we should have a public comment at the beginning at that point, but it should not just be agenda items only. It should be whatever end the public wants to discuss. I always felt strongly that if somebody from the public wanted to address the public, they shouldn't have to wait to the very end to be able to address a non-agenda item only. And also too, on the Board Comment, public limit 5 minutes per person. I disagree. We may have a discussion that takes 10 or 15 minutes. It's an opportunity... The other day, when Kim was talking, and the buzzer went off, called me off guard. I've only seen a couple times when we've had Board Comment last longer than 5 minutes. I think this gives us an opportunity to discuss with the public, and I don't think we should have a cutoff. So if this motion goes as the way, I'm going to vote no. If you would reconsider my comments, though, and allow the public to be able to discuss what they want without agenda items only, and if we could remove the Board Comment for 5 minutes, we would appreciate that.
Any comments or discussion regarding that, before I...
I'm happy with it as it's presented.
As far as the Public Comment Agenda Items Only, I feel that that's important, because that gives anybody the chance to come up without waiting to address the Board on things that we will be taking action on today, with our motions and resolutions. I don't think it's... If we have people that want to come up and talk about agenda items, and there's a motion and resolution, I don't necessarily... Sometimes, we have a bunch of people talking, and it's not fair, in my opinion, to make those people wait.
Chair Censor? I would agree with that portion of it, and if you observe any of the other meetings, they do that the same way. They allow about the agenda item first. And when they don't, I'm hearing people in the audience at other meetings go, "Is it agenda only, or can I talk now? Should I wait?" And I just think it makes it a lot clearer, and it allows them to have input before any votes are taken. So I'm okay with that portion of it. As far as the Board Comments being limited, I can condense mine, if that's the wish, because I know that sometimes my Board Comments are longer. Doesn't... I don't have a preference either way on that, but the Agenda Items Only, I feel strongly that we keep.
Also too, Madam Chair, it says, please, for Public Comment, please limit 5 minutes per person or group. I don't know what a group is. Is that Craig and Dave? Is that Herb and myself? I think we should strike that. There is no thing as a group. I want to hear what the public has to say. So putting deference to a group, I don't know what that means.
Yes.
We have had groups here, and they had a representative speak for the group. How were issued, they'll never vote, making it a group.
But if they choose, if each individual chooses to speak, we have an honor... We're honor-bound to listen to what they say.
Yeah, but then it could take half of a day, and you can't stop them.
I don't care about that. If I'm here all day, that's fine. The bottom line is, I don't know how you define a group. Is Dave and Craig a group? Can anybody define that?
I understand what Commissioner Milburn is saying.
I'm just trying to point out Dave and Craig.
In this case, they declared themselves as a group, and this is our spokesman.
Yeah.
If they don't declare themselves as a group, then therefore, they would... Everybody would get 5? Is that the clarification that we're seeing on that? So it only pertains to group if they clarify, if they announce themselves as being here as a group? Is that what you're...
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. I think we might need to reword that motion? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, it's fine.
The others, we can bring up.
I always talk about transparency, but we really have to follow that rule. I really believe that we'd be more transparent if we get to hear from the public to speak.
Madam Chair?
And then vote no.
Okay. Let's call for a vote.
This was brought up in a work session, revising Rule 5.3.
For the order.
Changing the order of Public Comment and Board Comment. That was what the discussion was at work session, and it was agreed to bring it through to the next level, which we're at now. So that's the only thing that's been agreed upon to deal with today.
I would agree with that.
Still voting for the entire motion, though.
Yeah.
Correct. We're still doing the entire motion, but if you read the motion, it just refers to the order, not what's in...
Correct. It's not what's in the agenda, it's the order of which...
Which motion.
If we want to change something else in it, we need to bring it to a work session.
So possibly, the things that Commissioner Milburn has brought forth can come back in a work session.
Good.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Milburn?
No.
Censor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Committee reports. Commissioner Morley, would you like to start?
So since our last meeting, July 10th and 11th, I spent quite a bit of time up here at the county working on the presentation for our lake level management that we're preparing for the public. On the 14th, I attended the Village Meeting, and a couple key points that came out of their meeting... First off, I have to say, there is so much on their agenda, and so many things that they are working on and accomplishing. It is pretty impressive for the Village to be doing what they're doing. The Spruce Demo finally has the permit that has been issued, I think, if I'm correct. Finally, ready to... It was issued, so hopefully, that demo will be happening soon. I know people have been asking, still some questions around the water bills, but they are working through that diligently, because they did have some changes. They have some new meters and working on the calibrations. But housing projects are moving forward. Some questions about people concerned about their compost site, and different people coming into that township using their compost site that aren't in that township, was discussed, economic development work that's going on. The other piece that I'm going to... I'll share you a copy with the rest of the Commissioners, their marketing plan they have put together. It's well-organized, it's easy to follow and read, and it's just... It was very impressive. So I will forward that to you guys as something to have on hand, because I think as we move forward in the next three years, thinking about how do we market? How do we communicate? And what our messages are going to be for the public, I think it'll be... It's a good example for us to follow. They did their mid-year budget review as well, so they're kind of in that process like we are. On the 15th, I went to our local planning team for an emergency management meeting. Some key things going on there that I think are important for our public as well is the emergency operations plan that will be coming for us as a Board. There are a couple exhibits that the Chair and myself, as a member of that committee, need to review, and I will get with you, Chair Censor, to review those before we look at that. Because of Region 7, we're part of that Homeland Security Planning Board, there was money allotted for projects. So we now have a 36-inch plotter that will give 24/7 resources for our first responders when they're trying to get things printed and maps and all that. It's... It was a pretty nice... And I think it actually came with ink cartridges to go with it, so that was nice for emergency management. There's a daycare facility opening up in Houghton Lake, August 1, that is going to hold up to 95 children, ages 8 weeks to 12 years. So that will be something coming in our county. The Road Commission right now apparently is doing a lot of contract work for MDOT. That was discussed. And there was a report on, I'm not going to say this right, car fentanyl, that's kind of resurfacing or coming to be a big piece in our county as well. July 16, I was at the Garrish Township Meeting. They swore in their new officer, Dallas McGreeery, who came from Denton. They have a proposed cell tower project that they're putting forward. They're sealing the county parking lots. The cemetery plan was presented, so a lot going on there in the Garrish Township as well. And I'll address some of those comments later. July 17, there was the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority Board Meeting. Tom Bratton, who has now serves in Slotkin's office, has resigned from that committee because of conflict of interest, so he won't be serving. They're filling that slot. They're filling that slot. The NMRA has approved their cost containment plan. If you've heard me say before, they're trying to cut eight to $10 million. They've approved that plan but have not released the funds back to Northern Lakes for the money that NMRA pays them by statute. So that money is still not in the coffers yet, and they are working towards resolving that. Because they now have the 2023 and the 2024 audit presented, I will have to say, that audit is the best audit I have ever seen as it was presented. The way that that auditing group shared with the board, all the differences, it was just laid out wonderfully, and I'll share a copy with our chair as well, because it's a nice way to look at them. They still have some cash flow issues, so they might be looking at a line of credit. They did some policy reviews as well. And then, last but not least, I was asked to speak at the Roscommon Senior Center and share with them what is the role of a commissioner, how do you become a commissioner, how the districts get formed, and things like that. And so they were a very welcoming group, very responsive, asked good questions, so it was, I was pleased to do that. That's it for me.
Commissioner Milburn.
Tended the veterans' get-together, gave Morrissey a check for $1,500 from Carolyn Wendell Pycheck, donated $1,500 for the monument for next year's event. Sons of American Legion donated 150 bucks. And we're getting ready for the big bridge walk. The veterans are going to get together. I think there's going to be about 30 of us total that will meet on the bridge. I met with Rex on the opioid discussion, and again, I appreciate your leadership, Rex. That's all I have. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Russo.
Authority board, that's all I have.
I attended an agenda meeting on July 16th. There was a Holton Lake Improvement Board meeting on Thursday, July 10th. However, due to an unexpected work obligation, I was not able to attend that. I've had numerous emails through the lake level email site. I've taken some phone calls regarding some weed issues on the canals. Taken on additional responsibilities in regards to the assessment role process and trying to keep the costs down, started getting familiar with constant contact and how that system works so that we can get more information out to the public in a timely manner. Working with Hi-Fi to see what we can do regarding more open history platforms for the monitors. Working on the permit process for Higgins Lake, and working with Commissioner Morley and Jody regarding an upcoming presentation. Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes, as I mentioned, I was at the MAC meeting on Monday, and the main thing was about opioid funds. And I also was sitting next to the representative for Senator High King's office, and we had some discussion about improving relationships with Eagle. That was nice. Materials management, I'm working through the process of getting reimbursed for the money that we spent. Having a little issue with it. It's all got to be done online, and you can get this form online, they say in the webinar, but I still haven't found the form. Difficult state of Michigan stuff. Also, I received a phone call about a person on Holton Lake talking about the weeds building up. Apparently, this is one of them years where weeds are detaching and piling up on the east side of the lake, and he had some concerns about that. And I explained to him that, you know, in years past when this happened, property owners hired someone to come in and all dump truckloads of it away. I mean, it's, I think it's just a natural occurrence that happens time to time. And also, we mentioned that most likely, a lot of weeds got tore up on a big weekend, and now the wind took them somewhere. Other than that, that's it.
Board comment. Commissioner Wolfson.
I have no comment. Thank you.
I have actually a couple comments. The first one is, I guess, the contention with the controller. Unfortunately, she's not here, but we all need to find a way to work together. I know that there are a lot of frustrations out there within the county. Opinions of all employees, elected officials, department heads are important, and we need to be able to hear everybody. My goal is to find a way for all of us to communicate, collaborate, to bring ideas to the forefront so that we can make this county the best possible county. Over the last two and a half years, I have sat and listened and observed. I also am out amongst the community, talking with abundance of people. Often I get asked, why did you want to be a commissioner? And do you regret your decision? And the answer has always and still is the same. When I took on the role of commissioner, my foremost aspiration was to prioritize the welfare of our county above all else. I approached this responsibility without any hidden agendas, solely driven by a commitment to do what is right for our community as a whole. I recognize that the choices I make may not always align with the popular opinion, but I firmly believe that integrity is paramount. Right is right, and wrong is wrong. It is in those shaded gray areas where the most challenging decisions often arise, and it is essential to navigate carefully and with consideration. My approach is always grounded in a thorough examination of factual information, which enables me to make informed decisions with the information that I have that serves the best interests of our community. So the answer is no. I don't regret becoming a commissioner. Commissioner Russo.
No, Karen.
Commissioner Milburn. Commissioner Morley.
Didn't know if you were speaking or not. You looked, no?
I'm fine. I've talked enough today.
All right. All right. Just maybe a couple. I definitely want to address, I don't follow Mr. Ostergans, whatever he sends out, but people like to send me what he says about me. So recently, he made a statement that says, Commissioner Morley's comments are concerning about, that I misspoke at a Garrish Township meeting. So I thought, hmm, maybe my comment about the chill might be coming to an end, the chill lawsuit. Maybe I'm wrong. So I checked on that with our attorney, who is a part of this lawsuit, and, you know, one, there are no court documents that say that this is done completely. Now, in respect to things being open and closed, there's a partial truth to what Mr. Ostergans stated. So this declaratory of judgment piece, it's been enforceable regardless of whether the two of the plaintiffs get solved or the nine. That has been regardless of the outcome, so, but there is no final closing documents on this to date. So maybe he was a little bit true, and I was a little bit true, but that is not a complete closed case today. I've been very pleased as well, working on this presentation with our chair and our controller about this lake level management as a whole. There has been so much information over decades of fighting that sometimes the messages aren't truly true. They're shades of gray, like you might have said, Chair Censor. And I think trying to level set, no pun intended, lake level, level set, is really important. And I'm hoping that that next lake level meeting will be able to do that presentation, but we are wanting to make sure that that information is clear and it is factual. So that is, it's been a lot of work, continues to be, but I think it's very important for our public. It's funny that you mentioned people ask you, because I kind of get some of the same questions, like, really? You wanted to do this? Because there's never anything nice that comes before you in a meeting. But, you know, despite the negative pushback we get from a few, I didn't come with an agenda either, and this role is so critical for our county, for everyone, that I don't regret this at all. And I kind of remember some comments, maybe I've said them earlier, that I'd like to leave people with. It's kind of like the self-deception or no self-reflection, that sometimes people like to point out others being so bad just to make their bad look good. And that's just not the way we work. It's not the way I work. I will correct mistruths and facts that are not true about me. I will do that. But I don't want to look back and say, I didn't do what was right for the county as a whole. I'm not trying to be right, I'm trying to make a difference. And that is the framework in which I work every day on every decision. Other than that, I'm done. Thank you.
Under five minutes.
Did I do that under five? Yes.
Public comment. Michelle.
Sorry, Eric.
Anybody else want to go?
So, Michelle Stevenson, county clerk. I'm just going to comment real quick. Controller left. Commissioner Morley missed, I think, maybe it was taken miss out of context, saying that I spearheaded these meetings with the elected officials? Yes, I coordinated elected official meetings. It wasn't a spearhead, a conspiracy, or anything like that. What occurred with the meeting that happened on Friday regarding insurance was simply a conversation among elected officials that wanted to help and work on maybe getting this process moving along a little bit quicker. It wasn't anything against the controller. Actually, conversation had taken place about the next meeting coming up, that we need to invite Jody to that meeting because we need her input, and we need her guidance on this as well. So obviously, a lot of conversation didn't get expressed, but now, I felt like this whole thing and what happened in the comment, to me, you win as she walked out. That was inappropriate. So I apologize to her if she took it as some kind of an attack on her. It was not. It is simply the elected officials looking at trying to help and work with the Board of Commissioners and the controller to make sure that we're providing the best that we can for the county employees.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up, Ray.
Ray Lutensky, Richfield Township Supervisor. Going back to the comments that were made when you were talking about the motion for the agenda, Mark Aminas, with all respect to you, please, to go to removing where is public comment on agenda items only is a huge mistake. I hope you will consider that if this does come to fruition, if that does come before this board. We recently redid our agenda items, and we switched to that because what we found is people were coming up stating something and then either leaving, so they don't go to the rest of the meeting and hear the actual truth, or they repeat during the other public comment, which makes the meetings go longer. This gives the public the opportunity to look over the agenda items and say, I hope when you vote on it, you will consider this, or they're against it for these reasons, and it gives the board something to consider. So I really hope, you know, that when it comes to, if that is brought up in the future, is that you think about those two things, because by personal experience, that is what is going to happen, and you're going to lose control of your meetings very, very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Real quick, I support what Mr. Morley's talking about, because you can do agenda items only, or any other item you want to do, all like we used to have it. So I support that.
I'm sorry, could?
Mr. Morley.
Mr. I meant, I meant, Mark, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm.
Just make it sure it's clear.
I don't want Bill beating me up in the parking lot.
Mr. Milburn, Commissioner Milburn, I meant to say that. I support that because it used to be. That's the way it used to be, and you can get a lot more done. So I don't know what the confusion is with only talking about agenda items only. I wanted to thank the chair for answering my question, but what I wanted was the measurements, and you said you were going to look into that. That's what I really want, is the previous data on those other measuring devices that were on the lake. And Stacy Hissong, as far as the rocks illegally being removed back in 2014, that's a fact. It's just a fact that happened. Stacy Hissong even said it in one of her meetings back in 2023, that it was illegal for the commissioners to remove those rocks. So that's where I get at, the illegality. And it's all over in the newspapers that they were removed. It was a fact, and they were never prosecuted, but it was illegal to do it. It was an interesting discussion earlier with Controller Valentino. You know, Jody and I, over the years, have had a love-hate relationship. She does, she does a great job, though. I got to say this, if you guys didn't have her here in this community, you'd be losing a lot. I'll tell you that right now. And we haven't always seen eye to eye on a lot of things, but if she was in another municipality, she'd be making a couple hundred grand a year, easily, easily. Okay? And what I want to add is, good managers delegate. Good commissioners are managers. They're here for oversight. They're not here to micromanage, and you created that position. You're not here, you don't have the expertise to do what she does. What I'm going to talk about now is an email that I sent out. Today, Holton Lake measured 2.64 inches above, Higgins Lake measured 3.12 inches below legal level, and Lake St. Helens, 0.72 inches above. I sent an email out, and what I said was, it's good to see that the commissioners are making progress, getting a permit revision to fix the outlet at the Cut River. Recent statements made by Commissioner Morley during the Garrish Township meeting, which she was talking about earlier, on July 16, 2025, concerning the ongoing level case involving citizens for Higgins Lake legal levels versus Roscommon County, were very concerning. During the meeting, Commissioner Morley made comments that appeared to misrepresent the current status of the chill legal case. She said, "The chill lawsuit that was filed in 2019 might be coming to an end." This is a quote. "There is a motion to discuss with those nine plaintiffs well with that as well, so hopefully that will be coming to an end." That assertion is incorrect. The chill lawsuit was not dismissed involving nine plaintiffs. Rather, it was dismissed with respect to two plaintiffs who no longer possess standing due to the sale of their property on Higgins Lake. It's important to clarify that while Commissioner Morley was partially correct in stating that the case may be concluding, her assertion regarding the timing is erroneous. The chill case ended in May of 2024, following favorable rulings from both the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court. Upon remand to the Circuit Court, chill successfully acquired a declaratory judgment. As the defendant county did not appeal the declaratory judgment, they are now legally obligated to comply with its terms, which include maintaining the legal water levels on Higgins Lake, something which they are now in non-compliance, a requirement that is currently not, is not being met. The existing water levels on Higgins Lake are out of compliance, placing the county in contempt of court. Given these circumstances, one must question the basis of Commissioner Morley's legal assertions and whether she's receiving competent legal advice, and I hope the rest of the commissioners don't have the same misconception. It raises concern about the accuracy of her understanding of this matter and potentially other issues. And if she wants to get on the email list, send me your email, and I'll send it to you. Okay?
Told you that numerous times.
Okay. What can happen, here's what can happen if a declaratory judgment is entered, which it has been, and the government agency doesn't follow the judgment. If declaratory judgment is entered and the government agency does not comply with it, several potential consequences can arise. Contempt of court. The agency may be held in contempt of court for failing to adhere to the judgment. It can result in fines, sanctions, or other penalties imposed by the court. Time out. Is it? Okay. I'll end with that. But there are a number of other things that you really got to seriously look at, and it's in the email, you all have it. Hopefully, it'll be published in the next, uh, next agenda meeting. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Hi, Pat Springstead. I'd like to just make a slight clarification on the infamous rocks at the, at the dam. The rocks were put in there by someone. Nobody knows for sure who they were put in there by. The commissioners at that time had Todd Kalish, who was the DNR Fisheries person, come out and take a look at it. And Mr. Kalish said that he wanted those rocks removed by the end of the day, per the permit. So I just thought I would just add that in for clarification, seeing everybody seems to kind of think that the commissioners just arbitrarily removed the rocks. They didn't, they were ordered by fisheries to remove the rocks. Just a little clarification.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Marcy Dankert, County Treasurer. I just want to kind of restate what Michelle had said regarding the meeting amongst the elected officials with a couple of the commissioners. The intent of that meeting was for elected officials to meet with representatives of the Board of Commissioners as our peers, because we all kind of, we're all elected officials. And so elected officials fall under a little bit different category than your other department heads within the county. Our purpose of our meeting was to discuss what's going on in our offices and amongst our staff, concerns that they have, whether it's regarding the insurance or any other issues. Insurance ended up being the, the primary thing that we focused on. And in no time in that meeting was it ever a session of how Administrator Controller Valentino was not doing her job or an excellent job at what she does. It was an open, honest discussion about insurance benefits for our staff and what can we do to better those. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? With no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned. All in favor, say aye.